Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council. Before we get started tonight, we have a couple introductions. I'd like to turn it over to Police Chief.
It's my pleasure to introduce our two newest officers, who the Mayor had the pleasure of swearing in this morning. Dean English on my left, Tyler Mantilla on my right. Just a little bit about both of our newest officers. Dean is a 2015 graduate of Troy Christian High School. He attended Cedarville University, where he graduated in 2019 with a Bachelor Arts in Business Management. He completed his Sinclair Criminal Justice Training at Basic Police Academy in July of 2019. Just last week, took his state certification test, where he scored a 91, and is now a commissioned officer in the state of Ohio. Prior to joining the Beaver Creek Police Department, Dean was employed at Old English Outfitters. He was also employed as a Campus Safety Cadet at Cedarville University, from August 2016 until his graduation in May of 2019. Prior to working at the campus security at Cedarville University, Dean served on the worship team, volunteered with the Iwana Program at Grace Baptist Church in Troy, Ohio. Dean and his wife Natalie live in Kettering, and we welcome them to the Beaver Creek Police Department family and look forward to Dean's long and successful career with our organization. To my right is Tyler Mantilla. Tyler's a 2008 graduate of Kettering Fairmont High School. He attended Sinclair Criminal Justice Police Training Academy, graduated in 2014. He's also a U.S. Army Veteran. He served from July of 2008 until his honorable discharge in November of 2011. Tyler's been employed since September of 2014 with the Sugar Creek Township Police Department. He's been a field training officer and evidence technician with them. He was also selected the Belrock Sugar Creek Optimist Hometown Hero, and he received an Excellence Award from the Sugar Creek Township Fire Department. Tyler and his wife Sarah live here in Beaver Creek, and we welcome them to the Beaver Creek Police Department family also. So I'll ask them, I'll start with Dean, if they have anything they would like to say.
I'm just very thankful for this opportunity, and I look forward to a long career in this city.
I'm very thankful for this opportunity, and I look forward to a long career serving in this city.
Basically, it's the same thing, thanks for the support, and I can't wait to work with all of you.
These are our two newest officers, and it brings us back to our staffing of 50 sworn, so we're glad to have them on board, and they've already had a full day today, so we're going to get them out of here as soon as we're finished. Thank you for allowing me to introduce them.
We have some additional introductions we'd like to do this evening. And Joe, would you come up and join me? Joe's with the State Auditor's Office, and Joe called me a month or two ago, a month and a half ago, and said that the State Auditor would like to honor people that stood out above the rest of the crowd from the tornado. And so I gave him a few names and a few organizations, and the only ones we have not been able to present to this dean are the two lovely ladies that operated the tornado network. And first, I'd like to ask Aisha to come up, please, and also Michelle to come up with here. And you can just stand on either side of us, or in front of us, whatever you like to do. But the, you know, for the people that don't know, Aisha started This Tornado Network on Facebook, as I understand it, and slowly realized a little help would be nice. And Michelle came on board, and it's just been a place that I go on a regular basis to stay in tune with what's going on. You've got the outreach to the community, that people know where to go if they have a question. It's just been a tremendous help. And so I would like to read, before I ask Joe to speak a little bit on behalf of the auditor, I'd like to read part of the recognition, the appreciation from the auditor. And it says, "Whereas the Beaver Creek Tornado Network was established to coordinate disaster relief, and became a critical resource for citizens, volunteers, and outside organizations to begin the revitalization process. And whereas the Beaver Creek Tornado Network facilitated a platform which allowed for citizens to coordinate and distribute resources to the community and maintain a presence, a process for them during which time of need that all we all, they all experienced." And so, "In recognition Beaver Creek Tornado Network for their leadership in navigating this inauspicious time in recent history." Now, the auditor obviously has a word, way with words. Anyway, it is signed Keith Faber, Auditor of State. And so, Joe, would you like to comment just a little bit, and then we'll both present these?
Well, I'll just reiterate a little bit about what the Mayor said. The auditors asked me to contact some of the communities that have been hit with this tragedy, and obviously Beaver Creek was one of them. When I asked the Mayor, the first names that came out was your two names, the church, Bee Hope Church, obviously, and your city manager, and it was...
In the chamber.
Right, in the chamber, that's correct. And the auditor wanted to make sure that we recognized you all for doing that, because sometimes when there's tragedies like this, things like the people that take the extra effort to go out and do things sometimes get overlooked. We wanted to make sure that you all were recognized for that, and on behalf of the auditor, we'd like to present these to commendation.
This is Aisha's, or I did it. I'm sorry. This is Aisha's.
All right. There you go. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And this is Michelle's. All right. There you go. Congratulations. Ladies, do you have anything you'd like to say?
No, it's been a journey, but we're definitely keeping it on. We've noticed the need with the community, and we've actually joined a group to help the community even more, so we're going to be here for a while.
It's going to be a long process. And I'm sure on behalf of Council, we would like to say thank you as a whole to both of you for all the work you did. So any comments from Council that are questions?
I'd just like to say it's totally service above self, and so that's wonderful to see people. We all know that Beaver Creek is a wonderful community, and we have great community members, but, you know, when people step up in tragedies, that's where the rubber meets the road, and so we thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much. All right, we'll call to order the regular meeting, and may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Curran?
Here.
Councilmember Littrell?
Here.
Councilmember Rushing?
Here.
Councilmember Upton?
Here.
Councilmember Van?
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia?
Mayor Stone?
Here. Do I have a motion?
Motion to excuse Vice Mayor Garcia.
Second. I have a motion and a second to excuse Vice Mayor Garcia. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. And now, the next item, I'd like to turn it over to Councilmember Curran for the pledge.
We'd all stand, please. I'd like to have a moment of silence for our first responders, faces, the things that they have faced over the last several weeks with the tornado and the unfortunate situation that happened in the Oregon District.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks. Thank you, sir. Approval of the agenda, we have it before us, any comments? Do I have a motion?
Seeing none, sir, I'd like to make a motion to approve with a second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Approval of minutes, August 12th, 2019, regular meeting. Any comments?
Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the August 2nd minutes as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
August 12th, I'm sorry, I said second, didn't I? Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next, approval of the August 17th, Management Strategy Workshop.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the August 17th minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next, August 19th, which is a joint work session with Beaver Creek Township. Any comment?
Mr. Mayor, if there's no comment, I'd move for approval of minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of August 19th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? I know I left early, but I won't abstain. All right. Well, we do have another presentation. Next on the agenda is a pre-scheduled presenter, which is the Auditor of State, Mr. Joe Braden, and I would like to ask that Mr. Casera and Ms. Hathaway join us up here in the front. You going to come down?
Yeah.
This is my favorite moment of the year.
Well, it's my honor to be here on behalf of Auditor State Keith Faber, to present the Auditor State Award with distinction to the city of Beaver Creek, again, as Zach said just a second ago. This shows a lot about the city of Beaver Creek. It says a lot about the integrity of the city of Beaver Creek, to receive this award year in and year out annually. Our office audits nearly 6,000 entities, and to receive this award on annual basis means a lot. As the Mayor was just saying a few minutes ago, the recent tragedy shows how the community comes together and works together, all the different members of the community, and that shows that integrity. Auditor State Keith Faber had the chance to recognize those, and that was a great moment, and I was glad to recognize the ladies just a minute ago, too. The criteria for this, I've read to you year in and year out over the past few years, so I'm not going to read it today, but you guys know it takes a lot. It takes every employee that you have here in the city of Beaver Creek to make this happen. Our office goes out and audits every single department in your city, and they all have to work together to make this happen. It takes the council members to make this happen, it takes the Mayor, it takes the city manager, and not the least at all, but the most important, it takes the Finance Department to make this happen. It just says so much for the city of Beaver Creek, and it's my honor to be here on behalf of the auditor to present this again. For me, it's five years. I've only been around the auditor's office for five years, but I know, I don't know what the number is, but I know you have received this quite a few years, year in, year out, and again, that just says a lot. On behalf of Auditor State Keith Faber, I'd like to present this award to you all.
Mr. Casera? Congratulations. Teresa? Thank you very much, and I would like you to give that to Bill and Teresa. They are the ones that really make this happen, so we appreciate it very much.
Absolutely.
Appreciate you guys, too.
Absolutely.
There you go.
Next, pre-scheduled presenter, Greta Mayer, Mental Health and Recovery Board, Green County, CEO. Hello there.
Hello, Mayor.
How are you?
City council members, good evening. Doing well. I think you have copies at your place, thanks Diane. To follow in the audience, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight, and as Mayor Stone mentioned, my name is Dr. Greta Mayer, and I'm CEO of the Mental Health and Recovery Board of Clark, Green, and Madison Counties. And in front of you is our fiscal year 2018 Annual Report. It was recently released, and I just wanted to highlight a few sections, talk about who we are and what we do, and give you those updates. We are one of 50 mental health and recovery boards, or ADAMIS boards, across the state, and we are empowered statutorily to plan, fund, develop, manage, and oversee a community based, the public, mental health and substance use services. And we exist to connect residents to care systems, and we provide pathways to mental health and substance use services, and we facilitate a delivery of quality care. And those resources that we provide to residents through property tax, levy dollars locally, and then we leverage state and federal funds for prevention services, treatment services, and support. On the inside cover, you'll see a letter from me to the community, and the categories of services that I just mentioned are described, and they're critical because they represent a whole continuum of care. When we say prevention services, you may think of school-based prevention services to keep kids healthy and drug-free, with healthy coping skills and so on. The treatment services, you may think of someone going for an assessment if they're having troubles in life, where a doctor might prescribe medication that's needed, or case management, or other counseling services. And the supportive services, you may think of recovery housing for someone in recovery from addiction, or supportive housing for individuals with mental illness, job supports to get people back on their feet and back working. Those are some examples of those supportive services. And below that is an important piece that recognizes our board members. Just over half of our 18-member board is appointed by local county commissioners, and the others are state appointments. And so having the local voices and local representation is important. And you'll notice Beaver Creek being represented, and since fiscal year 18, I've had other Beaver Creek appointees, so that's important for you to know, and we value that. Another thing on the right side, this is important to see, is our funding sources. And you'll notice that the majority of the funds that we have to invest in prevention, treatment, and supportive services for mental health and addiction are local property tax revenues, so about 70%. And I mentioned the state and federal dollars that we can leverage with the local tax dollars, but those are really important for us. So you can see that, it's overwhelmingly supported by Green County residents, and we appreciate that support very much. And so below the financial information, you'll see an image of all of our system partners. So when we talk about connecting residents who need services to a care community, we're talking about beyond the nine contract provider agencies that deliver the clinical or supportive care. We're talking about working with Chief Evers and the law enforcement that he provides and oversight, working with schools and higher ed, and other important players like local government and city government, because all of us have a vested interest and stake in serving all the residents who need, you know, connection to services. So we work with lots of groups of individuals to benefit our local residents. And one thing that I did want to point out, and it's been mentioned already numerous times, is in the wake of the crisis, the tornado crisis, we had some staff, Adrian Miller was one of the leads that worked with the local EMA and the Chamber and Public Health to provide ongoing emotional support that was provided, along with FEMA and the others that were here. And what those individuals did, we leveraged some state partners and other local residents who are trained to be companions and to connect Beaver Creek residents to the supportive services, clinical services when needed. And we did notice an uptick in the crisis calls that were received through TCN, Behavioral Health, and other supportive services. We wanted to make sure that residents knew that there was a help network there and how to connect them. So we appreciate, again, the city of Beaver Creek and being open to lots of individuals coming in and offering help, and I think the collaboration, obviously, with the award tonight is clear, and the faith community and many others stepping up. So we were happy to be a part of that, and we're in it for the long haul. We know that trauma of any kind, man-made or natural disaster, and we've experienced both, really has ongoing effects, and so we are going to be a partner with you moving forward with that, to provide whatever support we can. So on the back page, this may be the part of the report that you, you know, want to refer to or pass along to family or friends, and those are our contract care providers. Those are the agencies that deliver those services that we talked about. And so they work together, and we can leverage, since we are a three-county board, we can bring in services from other communities. If there's a waiting list, for example, for a Green County service, one of our neighbors in Clark County maybe has an opening, and we can send residents to those services when needed. So it's an additional benefit of being a three-county board, is to draw in additional services to the Green County community. So I didn't know if you had any, at this time, I'd love to entertain any questions that you may have, any comments?
Questions?
I just would like to thank you for coming tonight and for the Mental Health and Recovery Board of Clark, Green, and Madison Counties, because, you know, for full disclosure, I have worked with Greta Mayer before, and the services they provide to individuals throughout the county are amazing, and without the levy funds that people provide to this, there are a lot of people that would be in crisis without the proper care. So I think it's very important that everyone realizes just how much they do for the whole community, and that's three, you know, Clark, Green, and Madison County. So I think it's wonderful that you were here and that you provided this, so thank you.
Thank you.
Why don't you expand on some of the prevention things that are going on? Because I think our community really values that, and this gives you a chance to, again, share in case people aren't remembering exactly what's being offered.
Thank you very much for that. So prevention, a lot of times you think of prevention in the schools for school-aged kids, so PACT's Good Behavior Game, Botvin Life Skills are just two of the evidence-based, so research-based programs that show a tremendous return on the investment, when you invest in these robust prevention interventions. And we help train teachers, so many of the teachers in Beaver Creek schools have been trained in this, to help kids manage their emotions, being able to sit still, yes, for the younger ones, for the older ones, being able to stop and think before they act, identify what's really going on, and what may be a good way to solve this problem. And so it's very helpful, powerful interventions, and we partner closely with the schools, and Beaver Creek schools, I will say, are one of the leaders in Green County, and being early adopters in this intervention and these prevention strategies. And they have also adopted many more prevention interventions around suicide prevention, working with the peer mentors at the high school, and just a number of supportive services in addition to school-based intervention services. So I just applaud the Beaver Creek City Schools. They're, again, welcoming to additional support. They've applied for competitive grants that we partnered with them to draw down additional state dollars, and so we're looking for, you know, always additional resources for support. And one of the new things in the prevention arena I'll mention is with drug-free workplace. There's a lot of businesses that are looking for healthy and drug-free workers, and when things don't go well for someone who may be developing a substance use problem, employers who may consider a second chance policy in that that could help them in the end retain valuable workers that they've invested in. And so this is a newer area for us, you'll see more of this coming. We had a chamber, a cross-chamber Safety Council training around the use of medical marijuana and what that means for employers. So there's a lot of hot topics around this, so you'll see more coming soon in the community for businesses around prevention as well.
I think our chamber is doing, holding something tomorrow on that topic, probably one of your programs.
Fabulous, yeah, thank you.
And I think it's great that the students, starting at kindergarten and first grade, are learning that self-control, so that when they get to be in middle school, they have the personal skills to be self-evaluating for what they're being asked by their peers to do. So thank you for introducing that to our schools and our teachers, we appreciate it too. Thanks.
Anyone else? Just thank you for, especially the step up for the tornado. I mean, that is, everything you do is things that you, that you're programmed to do, but that is something that just seems to be over and above, you know? And it'll be a long, ongoing process, as people try to get their lives back, so we thank you for that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Okay, moving on. Ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. First is ordinance 19-16.
This is a second reading of an ordinance to establish a new special revenue fund and fiduciary fund in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles.
Is this Mr. Casera?
Second reading.
Oh, second reading, I'm sorry.
Second reading.
All right, this is a second reading. So this is a public hearing. Is there anyone present tonight that would like to address counsel on this ordinance? Seeing none, we will close that. This will naturally move on to the third reading, which will be the first meeting in September. Next, ordinance 19-18.
This is an ordinance to approve supplemental appropriations, certify additional revenue, and authorize inter-fund advances for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2019, and ending December 31st, 2019, and to amend ordinances 18-28, 19-01, 19-03, 19-12, and 19-17.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. You can see that we've been actually pretty busy with amending our original budget, and I believe this will continue for some time as we start venturing off into the second half of the tornado response. I'm going to just go over a couple of these things. We've already talked about some of them in the past. We freed up money in the street maintenance program, the 204 Fund. Again, you've often read that the city manager talks about the silos that these are in, and the money really can't be utilized in various places. The one way we can do this, though, is we save money by not doing the second round of the Street Capital Improvement Program, which were the ones above and beyond what we had originally budgeted. The amounts actually came in, the bits came in lower, freed up some money, and that was in 2004. And there was a project in 2004 also that we were able to delay for till 2020. So the question was, is how do we free up that money to be used in 2003 to accommodate some of the tornado expenditures? So what we determined was is that we could transfer one of the projects, the capital projects that was in 2003 to 2004. You have that freed up money, we transferred a project that was similar in that dollar amount, and that freed up the money in 2003 to allow us to maintain our fund balances and keep things going in 2003 while we pay some of those expenses. So what you see is, there's actually appropriation in one account and unappropriating the funds in 2003. So again, we have to, when we bring the project in, we appropriate in 2004, then we unappropriate in 2003 to free that up. I know that's a lot of technical accounting, moving around of the funds, but that will seem to work and free up the 2003 fund. We waited long enough to, as long as we could, to not advance the money from the general fund to the street fund to pay for some of these expenditures. We just got another batch, $158,000 worth of expenditures for, again, the cleanup, which was the July and August expenditures, while we were wrapping it out and had the final put-out date. So again, we have to pay those, and while maintaining the minimum fund balance in 2003, the 10%, we still needed the money to come over from the general fund. So this is the first advance that you're going to see, and an advance is really just a loan. We anticipate getting that money back at some future time, which is left up to the federal and state governments to do that once we submit all of the expenditures, but this is the first advance that we're going to be doing from the general fund to the 2003 to pay those expenditures. What we're trying to do is maintain all the expenditures in one fund, and again, related to the streets, and obviously, the safety and security came out of 2002, the police for their overtime, but all the other expenditures coming out of the tornado disaster are coming out of 2003. So this just allocates money into, from the general fund to 2003. We talked about that this was going to happen. We still know that we probably have $1.5 million out there of the second round of cleaning up the debris, which is the chipping, and then the shipping those, the final product to an EPA site, so that will be coming down the pike. But right now, we're still in the RFP process to get that up and running, and they haven't really started working on that yet, so that might be a month or two down the road. So, but in essence, the other thing, too, is that, the one saving grace, was that, again, conservative budgeting and certifications by the county auditor, we actually received $264,000 more in property taxes than we had budgeted. So again, we're going to certify that revenue, again, to help the fund balance and to pay for those for those expenses. So, in a nutshell, that's what all of this does, is gets that process going. But again, it's kind of monumental in that that advance is now started from the general fund because, again, the street fund is at the minimum balance that we have set. So, be happy to answer any questions you might have about that. It sounds like a shuffle game, but the bottom line is, is that we want to use the funds in the appropriate way in which they were designated for. And in order to do that, we have to do these transactions to keep everything in conformity with general accepted accounting principles in order to get the award again for next year.
I was going to say, that's why you're doing all this, just to get that award.
So I'd be happy to answer. A good time to do this, too, right after that. So I asked him if he could come every meeting, but he informed me it's once a year, so.
Any comments?
No, we did go over this in a work session, so it is appreciated that you're being able to help us survive this with such limited budget, so.
And it'll make it much more simpler when we go to request reimbursement from FEMA, to have it all in one package.
Yeah, I believe so. Again, the last ordinance you just approved was establishing that fund to assist in that process, Dale.
Just a general comment and I think some clarification for those watching at home and not quite as in tune to the finances as what we might be. But all the funds, to my understanding, that we are transferring are coming from the general fund to a more specific street or, yeah, the street levies, street funds, not the other way around.
The money's coming from the general fund to the street fund.
Yeah, so my point is, I don't want folks at home to think we're taking money from the parks fund and putting it into the streets or from the police fund. You know, this is all money coming from the general fund going right back into where it's needed right now. Let's.
You would not get that award next year if we did that.
Right, right.
And that's, that's a good point. The bottom line is with that, that is the only other fund that can fund the street levy fund. So again, all of those other ones are isolated and designated for specific areas, police, parks, that type of thing. But the general fund is really the savings account for the city. And just to let you know, we're starting to dip, so, good point.
All right. Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept ordinance 19-18.
Second.
All right.
Roll call.
I'll do that. You're going to do a motion to approve.
I'm sorry, that was an acceptance.
That's what I was going to say when I read it again, but that's all.
Yeah. Motion to approve ordinance 19-18 by roll call votes.
Still have a second?
I still have a second, yes.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 18, ordinance 19-18. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Littrell?
Yes.
Councilmember Rushing?
Yes.
Councilmember Upton?
Yes.
Councilmember Van?
Yes.
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes. Thank you. All right, next, resolution 19-51.
This is a resolution authorizing the police department to accept the attorney general, the Ohio Attorney General's Drug Prevention, Use Prevention Grants Program funding.
Oh, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Before I read the staff summary on this, I just want to point out, this year, the Attorney General's Office saw an unprecedented number of requests for DARE grant funding, which is why you're seeing me in late August after school has already started. They had decided to, rather than not fund some of the DARE grant requests, they reduced all of the DARE grant requests. So, we're not receiving what we requested, but this is about 33 years in a row that we have received funding for our DARE program. So we're pleased by that. So, again, the resolution allows police chief to accept state grant monies to be applied to the DARE officer's salary for the school year. The grant is through the Ohio Attorney General's Office and awards 65% of the $29,303 of funding that we requested. Beaver Creek Police Department will receive $19,046.87 for the 1920 school year. And the DARE officer teaches approximately 600 students in our school system. So staff's recommending passage of this resolution.
Comments?
So, for 33 years, that's a wonderful achievement, Chief. So I don't know how many other cities have had that in the state, but I know that DARE has always been a part of our community and several other communities in this vicinity. I don't know about 33 years, though, so. And this is the first time we've had a reduction?
It's, we've had reductions in the past, but this is the most significant reduction by just receiving 65% of what we requested. But again, it's something the state is going to look at next year because of the unprecedented number of requests to see how they can fund all of those requests at 100%. They were, they were not anticipating this and so they opted to, rather than not fund some of the programs, to reduce the funding for all of them.
Thank you.
All right.
Did we not have people in our audience that have donated to help pay for DARE? Didn't you guys donate money for DARE? Yeah, not you, okay. We had a person in Beaver Creek who wanted, who felt that that program was so strong that they wanted to, in Beaver Creek, our police officers are really good at it. And so in Beaver Creek, it is a very successful program. In some other cities, the officer is not quite as good, I guess, with the students as ours, but it gets high ratings here. And I think Greta would, would also say that it, she hears that it works well in preventing drugs and other bad behaviors. So I'm really glad that we got part of this funding and I'm glad we've had a person that helped, in the past, helped pay for it, too.
It's been a very important program for us as an organization, I think as a city, because I still run into individuals who are adults, grown, have families, and they were in our DARE program. And they remember it and talk about their DARE officer who instructed them when they went through in fifth grade. So, it does have an impact and the DARE program has changed over the years to, not only is it drug abuse resistance education, but it's about making good choices, anti-bullying messages. So the DARE program is not just about the drug abuse resistance, but it's about life choices. So again, our DARE officer is currently Officer Barry Wise Cup and he does an outstanding job. We've had outstanding DARE officers over the years, as far back as 1986 when we started this. And so, it's ingrained in our culture to be a part of the DARE program. And even when cities and townships and organizations were cutting back due to the recession back in around 2008, one of the first things everybody cut was their DARE program. We were fortunate enough through council's leadership to maintain that program in our budget and it pays dividends and I'm proud of the fact that we're still involved today and have been for 33 years.
Thank you, Chief. Do I have a motion?
You do. I'd like to make a motion, one to agree with what the chief said and what you mentioned, is that these are life, life choices and what a great program. And these children will remember that deputy or officer all throughout their life because sometimes that's the most important person they have that they can talk to. So, with that, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 19-51.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 19-51. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on, resolution 19-52.
This is a resolution directing the Green County Auditor to enter cost of noxious weeds and grass cuttings to the tax duplicate for the properties described in Exhibit A.
Mr. Casera is on his way back up here.
Yes, good evening again. This is our annual submittal to the county auditor to file tax liens and to file assessments on properties from the noxious weeds and our ordinances related to nuisances throughout the city. Most of you have already been through this process. I just want to go over it as a quick reminder that the ultimate goal here is compliance with our code. I mean, that's what we're ultimately doing. This is the result of that not happening. And I wanted to go over quickly the steps that we take to make sure that they're aware of the, you know, violation. And the fact is, is that we've gone through two or three steps before we get to this process, so, Pete, if you want to.
You got it.
Oh, I got it. So again, the city receives a complaint, whether or not it's, you know, from a, another resident or staff-initiated. This in particular is talking about the weeds and grass. If it exceeds 10 inches, we place a placard on their property and give them five days to correct the violation. And then if after the five days, we go back and re-inspect, if it's not completed, we actually have a contractor that we go on annually to get bids on this to keep the cost down. But we actually initiate the effort for the outside contractor to go out there and take care of the exception. And then, at that point, we invoice them. So again, what we invoice them is the contractor amount that's already a negotiated rate for us based on the size of the property. And we add an administrative fee of $100 to the property. Again, that's the disincentive for not taking care of it. If, after all that, we invoice the owners of the property that are on the tax rolls and, again, if we do not receive payment, then we add another $25 assessment fee for this process. And then, according to Section 97.16, in our Code of Ordinances, then we're allowed to place the outstanding invoice on the tax duplicate. In addition, the auditor also charges 5% on top of that. So you can see how this builds up pretty quickly. And we take a lot of time and effort to try to get all these folks to let them know that it's out there and, rather than incur all these fees, if they want to just pay the invoice, that'll get us there. So, after all that, we go through this process and we actually place the assessment on the tax rolls. We have to do that by September 11th for the following year. Again, the key here is, and I always like going through these statistics, even though they seem fairly boring, is that the fact is, is that we're trying to get compliance. And again, we have a pretty good rate of getting compliance. We actually are at hovering about 70%, which is pretty good. We actually adopted the abandoned foreclosure vacant property registry in 2016. So if there was vacant properties out there, they were required to register with us so that we knew who the contact was, so that, again, we could get these things taken care of and in compliance without going through all of this process. You can see that it was pretty instrumental in '17. It's starting to waver a little bit here as the number of far-closed and vacant properties has actually decreased and this is not as bad as a problem as it used to be. And you can see down at the bottom, we're actually keeping the average cost, you know, per the lot to actually have it mowed as low as we possibly can, again, by going out to bid every year to make sure that we're getting a contractor that is reasonable and within the market constraint. So, but again, I just wanted to emphasize this portion of it because, again, the mission in code enforcement is compliance, not assessment, so. So in summary, we actually do have 39 parcels here that need to be assessed and the total assessment amount that you saw on the ordinance itself is $10,918, which is by far the highest we've ever had. The, we put the assessments on that. We get the settlements, usually in the first half of the assessment, the settlements will be in March of next year is when we get that. And again, that money goes into the general fund to offset the costs associated with code enforcement in the Planning and Development Department. So, and again, what this resolution does is request the county auditor to place these assessments on the upcoming tax duplicates. So, be happy to answer any questions you might have. We actually are very good at collecting this. I think the previous year, we actually billed $5,700 and we got almost $5,600 back. So again, we're doing a pretty good job of, and this system seems to be working, although we still have outstanding, about $9,500 worth of assessments from. And again, the county auditor doesn't tell us where they're from or when they're from, but from previous year. So, again, the process seems to work and it gets the desired results and what we're looking for is approval of the resolution.
We're cut above the rest, right?
Exactly. That was going to be my, mine down here at the bottom. That was my closing statement, but.
See, you took it away from it. Took it away from it. All right, anything else? Do I have a motion?
So, in the area that was hit by the tornado, we're not, we're being more sensitive about this grass and weeds?
Yeah, I think we've sent out a detailed letter concerning that whole area and how we're going to handle it.
In kind of a more friendly, not friendly, but cautious way.
Yes, yes. Hypothetic, too. And again, trying to reach out a little bit more.
Yeah, there we go, there we go.
We have given every opportunity to those in the tornado area. There are some issues that may be in the tornado that aren't tornado-related that we are still addressing, but we're giving all the benefits of the doubt where possible.
I appreciate that. Therefore, I would move for approval of resolution 19-51, too.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 19-52. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carries. Next, liquor permits. Chief, you're back up.
I feel like I'm in competition with Mr. Casera.
It is, back and forth.
He's got one up on me.
Your daughter's not coming up.
He's got the award tonight. He's one up, so, but congratulations to Bill and Teresa.
You got three new officers.
And the finance department. Well, we'll have ours again coming up. But again, congratulations to Bill and Teresa and the finance department for the outstanding job that they do. I have a request for a new liquor permit for Club Oceana LLC. This is the third request for, the third different liquor permit for this location. The Ohio Division of Liquor Control sent us notification. This is referencing the new D5J permit for Club Oceana, 4429 Cedar Park. The records checked required by the Ohio Department of Commerce, Division of Liquor Control were conducted on the shareholders for this request and staff is recommending this application request move forward without comment.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept without comment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is council time. How about we start with Councilmember Upton tonight?
Thank you. Only comments I had, I want to give a big shout out to Bill and Teresa, as was mentioned, you know, with the award. I believe this is our eighth. Mr. Casera, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong. It's our eighth. So, wonderful job, year in and year out, and proud to say that I've sat here at this table for all eight of those. It's a great job and you make us look good, so appreciate that. Secondly, I just want to acknowledge that, you know, in our minutes, we had a joint meeting with the township trustees last week. I appreciate all of our joint meetings that we have with various community boards. It was very well informative meetings, is the word I'm trying to say, with presentations by the fire chief as well as our staff and some others. So it was good. Mr. Kretz is here tonight as well. Acknowledge him in the audience and say thanks, thanks for hosting last week. It was a blast.
I don't know if a blast, but it was good.
Yeah.
I mean, Bob left early. How many other could get?
Well, then it really did get, it really got good then.
It was so much fun. Councilmember Curran?
I would just echo Councilmember Upton's comments concerning our joint meeting. I thought it was very constructive and they really showed how the community can work together. It's just another consistent example of this.
Absolutely. Councilmember Van?
I'll report.
I'll report. Councilmember Rushing?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To piggyback off Councilmember Upton, you know, the 6,000 entities that are audited every year, I believe it's less than 5%. every year, I believe it's less than five percent that receive the auditor of state's award with distinction, and I'm sure the percentage even drops for entities that receive it year after year. So, something that Councilmember Upton said best, makes us all look good. The only thing I also like to add is, I had the opportunity to attend ethics training this past week, but I also want to give a shout out to Kim and Todd of the Parks Department, who are also attendants representing Beaver Creek. There are a lot of folks from Fairborn, since it was hosted in Fairborn, but I do want to recognize the staff members I saw attending that, that training. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Littrell?
Thank you. I guess that's just another example of our collaborations, so we do a good job at that. I just want to thank the staff of the Beaver Creek Chamber for hosting their lunch and learn. Lunch and learns are very popular now, it's one of, where you can go have lunch and, and learn about a topic. Tomorrow's topic is about having marijuana in the workplace, and it's actually, the, the speaker is from the Bureau of Workers' Compensation, so that's really important, because as the laws change, as employers, we need to understand what we are expected and what the expectation is of our staff. So, I think that's extremely important, and I appreciate the chamber bringing that information to all of the business owners in the area. Second thing, I'd just like to remind everyone that the In Touch is Out, it's one of my favorite magazines, and I hope that you look through it, there's some great information, there's some information about the charter amendments and some upcoming information, so please, I'll always look forward to that this quarter. And again, it's a collaboration between the township and the city, and so, again, you know, we collaborate with as many entities as we can, as a cost savings to the, to the community, and to have that good camaraderie within the agencies in the area, so that's all I have.
I thought of something I could announce. The first Wednesday of September is, is September fourth, and our city manager and staff are going to be talking about what happened with the tornado for Beaver Creek Women's League in the morning. And those meetings are open to the public, and so if you want to hear the details of, of what happened and, and how all of our staff, first responders, were involved, the Beaver Creek Women's League meetings are at Peace Lutheran Church, and they are open to the public as a, as a public service for updating the community on issues of importance, so put it on your calendar, nine-thirty, or ten-thirty's the speakers, so, the meeting's at nine-thirty.
Councilmember Upton, you wanted to add something, please?
I was just going to call out our wonderful popcorn festival. I will let Mr. Landrum take the full, full credit for it, but I just want, I want to make sure our volunteers that are working the popcorn festival get the recognition that they deserve, as well as making sure all of our citizens at home know that it's coming, it's popcorn festival time, so with that, I'll turn it back over.
All right. All right, moving on, mayor's report, and I don't have a whole lot this evening, but I do want to mention a couple things. One has already been covered, and that is the chamber event, and that's at Harbor Chase, and I believe it's at eleven forty-five. So, I plan to attend. This is the marijuana subject that we were talking about earlier. I also want to invite you all to come out to Xenia Thursday at seven o'clock, that is the annual Beaver Creek Xenia Challenge football game. And I had to, had to give the trophy back to Xenia last year, so it'd be nice if we got it back this year, but you're all welcome to come out and join me and Mayor Sarah from Xenia. Today, we had, it was our regular mayor's lunch as well, the four mayors around the area, three in Green County and the mayor of Riverside, we get together once a month for lunch, just to, just to chat about what's going on. And we all have the same, similar issues and that sort of thing, but it's a, it's a, an enjoyable lunch. Another, well, I think that's about it. I was gonna say, I'll talk to you about that later. All right, I think that's all. We'll move on to the city manager.
I guess I'm getting a talk to later.
No, 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 no.
I did want to congratulate.
Not appointed anywhere.
Congratulate Mr. Casera and Ms. Hathaway. You know, the city staff, you know, we're, we're small in stature, so to speak, as far as numbers, and so, the finance department isn't a big finance department, you go down there and you could stand in one location and see everybody, so it's a small department, so they, they do such a good, good job at everything, so congratulations, well deserved. I just wanted to piggyback on Zach's popcorn festival, you know, it is coming up, seventh and eighth. Saturday, it opens at ten, at eight P.M. with the five K run at eight-thirty A.M., and Sunday's eleven to six with the car show, registration at nine A.M. Over two hundred booths, food, festival, if you've never been, yeah, you gotta go one time. Hopefully, it's not, it's unlike, knock, somebody, everybody, knock on wood, it's not like last year with all the rain and torrential rains last year. But the city will have a booth, Parks Department, Police Department, we're all there, so please stop in, we got volunteers that we're all, we've volunteered to staff the tent the entire time. We'll have posters up of projects and information handouts. I'm sure police always have goodies to give out to kids, so please stop in to the booth, police, city tent to see us. Additional information, this is not a city's event, so this is by the popcorn festival committee, but, so if you have any questions, it's six oh two corn, or the info at beavercreekpopcornfestival.org. Please contact them for any additional information. And just want to, another thing that has snuck up on us very quickly is Labor Day, the offices will be closed September second and observance, so happy Labor Day. Of course, any emergencies, please call nine-one-one, but for non-emergency, you can contact Police Department at the four-two-six, twelve-twenty-five.
Well, thank you. We're all being a little condensed tonight, that was good. All right, moving on, citizen comments. Is there anyone present this evening who would like to address council on any issue? Please come forward and give us a name and address.
Good evening. My name is Tom Creutz, one-four-seven-seven, Huntland Court North. I come before you this evening as a professional courtesy to inform each of you personally that I have declared myself a write-in candidate as Beaver Creek Township trustee for the November fifth election. As you may know, Mr. Roberts submitted his petitions to the Board of Elections on April nineteenth, nearly four months ahead of the deadline. Earlier this week, Mr. Roberts learned that two of his three signature forms that he turned in were rejected by the board for a typo on the second page. Consequently, his name will not appear as a certified candidate, he will not be on the ballot, and he's ineligible as a write-in candidate. Based on these circumstances, and given that Mr. Roberts was running unopposed for a township trustee, I believe he deserves at least the opportunity to be considered as a nominee with others for the position he otherwise would have certainly been elected to. My running as a write-in candidate could create that opportunity. While this contributed to my decision, my primary concern is what is in the best interest of Beaver Creek, our community. Our trustees are responsible for an organization with a twenty-five million dollar budget that provides fire and EMS services to approximately fifty thousand residents and businesses, along with a host of critical planning and zoning, roads, and other critical services to the unincorporated portion of the township. As you heard at our recent joint meeting between the city and township, the Beaver Creek Township has made tremendous strides over the last six years. We have gone from four hundred thousand in the red on the general fund to four hundred thousand in the black, and we've increased the township's investment income, interest income from less than ten thousand to over a hundred and fifty thousand annually. Those two changes alone resulted in a positive one million dollar change to our general fund. Under, over the last six years, essentially, we implemented private sector best practices across nearly every department of the township. When faced with a residential and commercial development explosion in both the township and the city, that created the demand for a fifth fire station, that came in nearly one million over budget due to skyrocketing construction costs. Rather than absorb that added cost, we implemented a first, the first virtual fire station sixty-five in the history of Beaver Creek. We have been committed to extending and holding true to our ten-year funding plan. These are just a few of the accomplishments over the last six years that I've been on the board. I'm committed to Beaver Creek Township and our community, so much so that my wife and I recently purchased a new home in the unincorporated portion of the township. We are semi-retired, our kids live out of state and other parts of the country, and so we could have moved anywhere, but we chose to stay here. This is our hometown, we love Beaver Creek. I believe in running local government no different than I would run a one hundred million dollar company, and I've done that. I'm passionate about transparency in government and sound conservative fiscal discipline. I believe in providing best-in-class service to our taxpayers. My goal is to preserve and build upon all that the township has worked to bring about over the last six years, bolster an even stronger relationship with the city, the county, and Wright Patterson Air Force Base, and I thank you for your time this evening. One last comment, tomorrow's my wife's birthday. We've been married thirty years, I'm the luckiest man on the planet.
Happy birthday back there. That applause was not for you, Tom, that was for your lovely wife now. All right, anyone else? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn? Have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye. We are adjourned, thank you.